Good evening, everyone, and welcome to our regular school board meeting Monday, July eighth, two thousand nineteen. I'll call this meeting to order at six P M. Can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Nicole Boye.
Here.
Glenn Carlson.
Here.
Debbie Knopf.
Here.
Larry Gerigian.
Here.
Cindy Garrity. Craig Hoopman. Rocky Tripp.
You said me.
Did she?
Oh, I didn't hear you.
Oh.
Can we please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I was trying to write down what she was saying.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united in God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Linda, can we have a confirmation of our meeting posting?
Yes, I confirm that the July eighth, two thousand nineteen school board meeting was posted at all designated locations.
And we are looking for an approval of the agenda.
So move.
Second.
We have a motion by Deb, second by Glenn. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Larry.
What?
You voted.
Aye.
Motion Garrity.
Sorry, I figured if I didn't say no.
From our audience this evening, we have one written request from Mr. Ben Wagner. If you'd please come to the microphone.
Okay, got it. Hey, thanks. Thanks for having me. By the time I go to sleep tonight, I'll have driven about four hours out of my way to come be heard for about three minutes. So if I go over by a little bit, just bear with me. I'm not going to take all your time. I have some handouts for you, but I'm going to hold off on giving those because if I give them to you, you're going to not listen to me. So I don't want to get you distracted. So I do hope you'll listen carefully. I'm not just here on behalf of myself, but I'm here on behalf of some other people in the elementary who have expressed concerns over some of the plans with what's going on, plan-wise, with the playground coming up here. And we are not being heard about it. So I'm also here on behalf of some of the kids, I think, who would react strongly to this issue if they were to know about it as well. I'm Ben Wagner. I'm a paraprofessional here. Been subbing here since two thousand fifteen. And I think what we're going to discuss here for a little bit deserves more discussion than it's already gotten. So I'll keep this brief and informative the best I can. It was shared the last day of school that there's a pending work order to have the large oak tree on the upper playground cut down and removed. Dave Weber told a group of us that the roots have been deemed as a tripping hazard, and they need to either be removed or covered. Myself and others have discussed concerns and alternative solutions with Mr. Weber, and I've made several personal contacts with him this summer, begging him to please hold on this project a little bit until we can address it as a school community and to allow the best interests of the students and the playground space to be evaluated by local ideas and on a local basis instead of just from outside advice. So that he's held off. Thank you, Mr. Weber, to get us to this point to at least talk about it. He's got to make a plan pretty soon, so he's currently limited in his options at looking at the alternatives instead of just cutting it down. He recommended coming here, so here we are, and let's go. In order to honor the folks that laid out the current playground, I think we should understand that we moved from a former playground up on the hilltop, right? It used to be up by where the school garden sits right now, and it relocated down there in about like two thousand, I think. If you want the date, it's on a rock down by the swings on our current playground. It was relocated to its current space, and I believe that was formerly a forested piece of land, and it was thinned out to allow for playground space to be down there. So as of two thousand seventeen, I believe there was about eight large trees left on our playground. That year, a work order went out to remove a very large cottonwood tree, as well as several aspen trees. I can tell you, at that time, the aspen trees were inhabited. There was bird nesting going on in there. We used to watch the Downey woodpeckers, or Downey woodpeckers, yep, going in and out of their hole in that tree with elementary students. So at that time, we had kids viewing and seeing nature and building connections to the natural world on our playground down there, right? During summer school that year, when the elementary students saw that the group that I was in, we drove by while that tree was going and being removed, and they were visibly upset. They were concerned. They were kind of shocked, actually. So now we're looking at the next step towards a tree-free playground. Staff who approached administration, they didn't really get very far. Beyond just that, there's plenty of concerns and other legitimate concerns, excuse me, about cutting down a perfectly healthy oak tree like that. First of all, I don't think I can recall anyone tripping on that tree, as far as I can think of anyways, and I talked to other people, and they can't either. This tree and this space have been used safely in the daily, on a daily basis, and it's an integral part of the playground for these kids. Every day at morning recess, I watch the kids stepping over the roots and on top of them, playing, circling the tree, playing hide-and-seek using the tree, and driving their toy vehicles up and over the roots using the bumpy roadway that it provides, right? So also, you should know that kindergarten uses this tree to collect acorns for activities they do with counting numbers. Okay, so an activity like that for kindergarten people, students, you're tapping into multiple different intelligences right there. You've got teamwork, you've got exploring, you've got gathering, and then eventually you've got the mathematics behind it too, right? You've got a multi-faceted lesson right there, and it's effective. It's turned into a tradition in kindergarten to keep that lesson going because of how effective, how effectively it works, okay? Cutting this tree down is also concerning if you've gone out there to see how the other more recent tree plantings are actually doing. The students place great pressure on these trees, on these young trees, due to their tendency towards their tactile functioning, right? They like to touch this stuff. The buds get stripped, the stems get broken, and these trees don't grow. You can go out there and look at the young apple tree that's up by the kindergarten window. It's not going anywhere. It's stunted. Considering that this oak tree grew up in a forest space and not on a playground, I would consider that tree out there to be pretty much irreplaceable as it stands, as that space is used right now. You're not going to get a tree like that to grow back, just FYI. Another concern is the shade this tree provides for people, the people thing, right? The students and the staff of this building rely on that for shade during their outside times. On the last day of school, this last month ago, or whatever it was, wherever we are now in summer, I was approached by several kids on the playground who swore it was too hot for them, too bright for them to be outside. They wanted to go back in. And I said, guys, remember, you can go down in the shade, and they did, and we didn't hear anything more from them. They were fine. Okay, so it is providing a service out there for sure. There's already an issue with getting things to grow on the upper half of the playground. It has to do with the south-facing heat off of the building. It has to do with all-day sun. It has to do with very little consistent moisture, and it has to do with compaction from the kids playing on there. Removing the shade and the structure from within the soil that this tree provides will only exacerbate this problem that you're looking at already out there. This tree is leftover from the forest that once stood there. It's not going to grow back the same way it used to, and the tree should be, and it is used educationally here, okay? So from getting myself educated on this topic, it seems there's plenty of options for working creatively with this advice from the consultants. But apparently, the alternatives are not being given any kind of serious examination or consideration here in this building. The simplest and cheapest would be a two-by-eight perimeter boxing in the hazard, the tripping hazard of these roots, and filling it with woodchips and a liner on the downhill side to retain the material during the heavy rainfall events. Other more involved options, things like our tech ed building is good at, would be like building a table or bench system around it and integrating the tree as a usable space. It could serve as an outdoor small-group classroom space. If you had a small group with, say, a new school counselor, go out there and talk around a tree. Be a really effective thing, actually. I'd be willing to donate my time, my labor, and some money towards this if we could get permission from y'all to do something effective and forward-thinking with this situation out there. I'm begging you to consider that we still have environmental education opportunities on the playground as it stands, and please recognize that. And before, recognize that before we're going to take away one of the last facets of that component of our playground. And what will be left with after that is memories. We're not going to have that thing left, okay? So there still is opportunity out there. I do have some documents just to hand around. I'm going to be done and relinquish my time for right now, but I do want to get these handouts to you, and you guys can go with them from there, and hopefully you can talk about it later on and have a good discussion about it. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ben.
Some pictures of some students utilizing it. Get you a visual of what that tree looks like.
Thank you.
And a visual of the actual ground hazard that it poses on the latter pages. Thank you for your time.
Could you have one for Linda for her records?
Yeah, you bet.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, my God. It's beautiful.
Is there anything else from our audience? We'll move on to the approval of our school board minutes for our June tenth regular school board meeting. We can separate them or do them together? Do you, if anyone have preference?
I'm fine doing them together.
Our June tenth regular school board meeting and our June nineteenth special school board meeting.
Motion to approve.
I'll second with one correction on the special meeting under item eight, the third motion. Craig Hoopman has shown his voting yes, and he was not at the meeting. So, and I let Linda know.
We have a motion by Deb and a second by Glenn to approve with correction. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries.
Oh, I'm just looking now. It looks like Craig didn't, he voted yes in all of the motions.
It was just the special meeting that he was not.
This one?
The nineteenth.
I can't read that from here, so.
Oh, this is the tenth. I'm sorry.
Yeah, he was, it was just the nineteenth. There were just the four of us.
Okay. Aye.
Aye.
We'll move on to eight point one, or communications reports, effective communication. Do you have a?
Yeah, so our strategic plan, we have four pillars. One of them is effective communication. So there's two things I want to talk briefly about with you. One is regarding the board, in terms of board docs. And the second one is our substitute teacher call-in system. And I'll start with the second one. Right now, we currently have, we've done things this way forever in terms of if a teacher's ill, they'll call in the secretary. That's five-thirty, actually after six in the morning, because before six A.M., they use our home sick line. And the secretary wakes up at five in the morning, she gets that, and anything beyond that, the other secretary will get after six A.M. So we're going to get away from that. We're going to use our frontline system, which currently offers applicants the ability to go online to apply for an employment position here. So now what we're going to do is implement this form of communication for our staff. So if they call in ill, or if they have an appointment of something prior to that date, they'll go into this system. The system then will record it, take the information, then assign a substitute teacher for them, not using our current staff. Okay, so it's all automated. Now, most districts use this. The bigger districts obviously do this, like Superior, Ashland.
How do they contact, how do they?
So there's, there's, there's a number they call. And Randy, go ahead, Randy.
There's three different ways. They can be proactive and online, log on and see if there's any job openings. They can call a line to see if there's any job openings, and then the system will actually call them also. Those are three different ways that they can access and can pick up a job, our substitutes.
But the system will call, will call a sub and keep calling until they get somebody that says yes.
The staff can set up their favorite five, so they can have, like, let's say they like Ben Wagner as their favorite sub. They would put that in the system, so then Ben would get the first call. If Ben says, you know, he would have to push no, I don't want that job, then it goes to the next person on their favorite list, and then it goes to everybody after a certain period of time.
Oh, okay.
Washburn uses it, Ashland uses it, and they also, there's also an app on your phone where they can look one way and look, see if there's any jobs available.
And it gives us the ability to, you know, like screening, printouts, we can do data, we can do resource. And it takes away from the secretaries having to wake up at five in the morning.
And right now, we're paying overtime for secretaries on the weekends to find subs if they, you know, if there's a big weekend and they can't find subs. Kelly's at home Saturday night, Sunday night calling subs also to make sure to fill those jobs.
That's nice. Sounds like a good plan.
The second thing, Randy, the second form of communication is board docs. Linda was going to come tonight to do a quick presentation. She showed me some of the early drafts of it for you. She's already started to implement some drafting in the board docs, for you, like the agenda and everything else. But tonight, what we'd like to do is ask you, prior to next month, we want to get this going. Would you be willing to come in for an hour before the board meeting or another designated time to go through it with Linda? She wants to go through a quick training module with you.
Fine with me.
I would prefer to do it the same time as, same night as a meeting, just to make it simpler.
Half hour, hour do you want it?
Hour.
Well, there it is. So we will, we'll definitely get that notice out to you. We'll make sure that everyone's aware of it.
So we'll plan on that for the August meeting?
August meeting, five people.
Okay. Thanks.
You bet. Thank you.
Eight point one point one, do we have any, or I don't have any updates. Do any of our board members have any communication or updates? Any future agenda items? We'll move to eight point one point two, our finance committee.
Finance committee met a week ago. We reviewed vouchers and opened the bids on tonight's agenda. We were also recommending the sale of our two thousand eight Chevy Express van, and we just received tonight a bid for the entrance landscape, so we'll be looking at that. We also discussed the state of the La Pointe School and the need to make significant repairs and retrofitting. We also talked about the need to do a lot of work here, including on the ancient roof. We've got a lot of issues and opportunities. I mean, this building's, not this building, but the old building's one hundred and twenty-five years old. The La Pointe School's ninety-two years old. I think, yeah.
I didn't know that. Wow.
Yeah, I just found that out. And so what the committee would like to see is that at a board retreat, I think we talked about doing one in August, that we put on the agenda and maybe spend a fair amount of time talking about the wisdom of retrofitting and repairing versus replacing, rebuilding. I know for the La Pointe School, the cost of retrofitting is going to probably be a significant percentage of the value of the entire structure. Probably not quite as much here, but anyhow, so that's, that was the building issue. We also considered and recommended bringing the pay increase for non-affiliated and support staff into alignment with the three-point-one-five percent overall increase that we gave to the teachers. That was our meeting. Are there any questions?
Oh, thank you.
Just, just one, and I don't know yet. When you have a finance committee, you have all these committees. Is there such a thing as having a quorum at these meetings, so you vote on stuff that, or is it just that you just bring it to one or two people and discuss it, and that's it?
So how is design?
Because, because sometimes you look at things, you know, especially with finances, you know, and the board, or the finance committee comes and recommends to the full school board, where they're not privileged to all the information or all the communication that there. So when it comes to the board here, they're, they're asked to vote on something, not knowing all the pertinent information. So if you had a finance committee, and if you have a membership of five, wouldn't you think that three, at least three of them should be part of that committee? So you can make these decisions. If not, then you shouldn't make the decision. Something to think about.
Yeah, so the only thing we're required to do with the three committee, the board, board members on the committee is to post it as a meeting, but there's no forum of four.
So there's no rules or regulations either, then?
No, which is open discussion.
No, I don't, I think we should look at that and talk about that.
Well, that would happen in April when we, yeah, in April, when we come up with the annual meeting.
Well, that is, we still would have to come up with some kind of a policy on it, you know. If we're going to have a membership of five in a finance committee, then should have at least three of that personnel there at the meeting.
We actually, Larry, only have three people on each of these committees.
Well, maybe they should be bigger then. You know, I don't, I don't know. You know, it just seems to me that, that sometimes you have your committee meetings, and they're not fully functional.
One of the options that, I, I agree. I think sometimes we have limited information when we, you know, are trying to make a vote. And I guess I, in, in the past, have used that time at this regular school board meeting to really try to dig down and ask people who were at that meeting the questions that I, why would you, I don't understand why you're recommending that, you know what I mean? What is that based on? And then we can bring it up when we have those questions, because it is hard, like you say, sometimes, so.
I sat on the finance committee, but it would have been just the two of you there had I not been there. And I'm not a voting, I would assume I wouldn't be a voting member of that committee, because I'm not appointed to it.
I think he is appointed.
No, it's Rocky and the two of us.
No, it's Rocky.
So is Larry on the, on any committee?
No, it's Craig.
Policy?
Oh, that's, no, Craig took himself off of that, so it's Rocky, yeah, so it's Rocky and me.
So we bring in then Larry's on the policy.
Well, it's just something to think about, you know.
Yeah, good question.
So if that were to happen, we'd have to have four in the committee for any type of voting to go on. Yep.
Three. Three's a.
Four is the quorum.
How about committee of five, or?
Well, we have a seven-person board, so the quorum is four.
I haven't even talked about numbers.
So as soon as you have four people in the room together, that's a quorum, legally, that's a quorum.
With three, we just, we're obligated to post it.
Right.
But there's no action.
There's no action.
There's no act, so you're not making, voting.
There's no judgment.
No voting. It's decisions. Okay, it's just.
The purpose is.
Okay, just a thought.
I think it's just a different purpose. Eight point one point three, our policy committee. We met also the last Tuesday with Chris Tretto from Neola and had a lengthy discussion on how to move forward and what that would look like, and we will be bringing, discussing that in more depth at the ten point one point two. However, that approval will, will be a request to table, because we are not ready for any final approvals with our policies.
Okay.
There's many updates that have occurred in between the time that we made our first drafts and now, and so those need to be addressed with our administration, and then our policy committee, and then the board. And we kind of laid all that out at the policy meeting to say that's the administrative's responsibility to meet with Chris, to address those updates and changes, and then bring it to policy. And the plan will be to approve all the policies at once, so that we're not piecemealing it together, and then again, just drawing the process all out. Is that bullet? That, I mean, that was all we really talked about at policy. And eight point one point four, our wellness committee, we did not meet this last month, and I don't think we'll meet till the fall.
Right.
Okay. Eight point two point one, we have our district administrator report. Well, all reports we can review together.
I can make a motion to accept and place on file eight point two point one through eight point two point seven.
Second.
We have a motion by Deb and a second by Glenn. Is there any discussion? I know, I think I have a couple of questions if we could just.
You wanted, you wanted me to include a referral from Johnson Control and then.
Yeah, thank you very much. That was very helpful.
I also wanted to talk a little bit about the boiler system down at the recreation center.
I had a couple of questions too in this season, or I think it was, but you want to talk about that first, or?
Well, I was just wondering, whose word do we take? I mean, one plumber says he wants sixty-eight thousand dollars, and the other plumber said it's not necessary.
So in Jan, January, February, we met with the pool committee. They're the tenants, we're the owner. They could bring forward any requests they want. They could want us to fix all the lights in the building, but in the end, the school board here would recognize with Dave and myself and Randy, we would have our own assessments done. In the end, it's our building, our building. So they can come up with any recommendations they want. But in the end, Larry, it's the board's decision to get the assessment done. It's the board's decision to approve any renovation or fixtures.
Who, who asked for the, the update on the, on the boiler system? I mean, did this?
It was the pool committee.
One of their idea? Okay.
I should say the recreation center committee.
Sixty-two thousand. Oh, I exaggerated by six.
I just have a question in the RTI academic action plan, or a couple of questions, actually. So under the area of need on page one, the last action, it's saying that middle school, high school RTI time has been moved to the end of the day as part of multi-level systems approach, and ACP will be incorporated in the middle and high school RTI time. Does that mean there's no more separate thirty minutes a day for ACP?
Middle school's just on Friday. High school will be on Sunday, but speakers, I don't know, save that for the next one. It's remaining the same.
It's remaining the same.
Yes.
I have a question on the next page. So the, the second one, collaboration, use the process to collaborate with and engage parents, guardians of students receiving support at the selected level, and the actions. I'm guessing it's in the planning, but it doesn't say anything about collaboration. It just says, hold family nights and organize at least one family event at Red Club. So I'm confused how that's collaboration with and engaging parents.
We didn't add those items in there. That's something that we'll continue to discuss and try to formulate. I mean, it's always a struggle of what can we involve them in, what can't we involve them in for confidentiality purposes. So we're in the midst of thinking about that process. We didn't want to tie ourselves down to something that we knew wasn't achievable, so we didn't add anything at this time. Which we know we can do family nights and make it interactive and getting feedback, like we did with the attendance night, like we've done with the PBIS night, where we've had parents engage and say, what more do you need to know? What can we do differently to improve? Those are some of the collaborative formats that we've done. Trying to develop a process. We're, we're going with a new wise-dash-local system, which is like a big data vault system. We would like to somehow incorporate that, so that there's that line of communication with parents and seeing that information. But again, that's brand new to us, and we want to get our feedback before we start involving parents with that process. Does that make sense? This has always been a, this has been a big struggle.
I guess my, my idea is more about collaborating with agencies outside of the school to engage parents better, or collaborate with anyone, something to, yeah, engage parents.
When I looked at it, I first was thinking that it was more intended like a one-on-one, you know, how are we engaging?
What this is intended, so when we take, there's something called a SERV, which is a school-wide implementation review. It has specific questions that it breaks this down, you know. Part of it is that the entire reason for doing the survey is to monitor our progress in developing our system, and part of that is a problem-solving team. That's where that collaboration comes in, like our PST, our people service team that meets. And Nicole, you, on a head start, you had, I can't recall what you called it, those are PST, but it was very similar. This is what they're talking about, where it says collaborate with engaged parents, bringing those parents in and being a part of that PST team. Well, we talk about many students at that time, so that's where we get hung up of confidentiality. How do you make them a part of a problem-solving team? That's pretty much what this is asking. And so I, I'm yet to reach out to others to see how they're meeting that goal on their surveys.
And the next one, I feel like it's a little contradictory to say that you're going to engage parents and guardians as active team participants at each step of the problem-solving process, but you're not doing anything but informing parents when students enter tier two and tier three, and sending a letter when kids are at tier one. It just, it is, is contradictory, because that's not really engaging parents at each step, I guess.
Of the problem solver, getting together, you know, sitting down and going, okay, so here's what we're dealing with. Here's what's working. Here's what's not working. What do you, so that you're actually.
Right, and we talked about doing something called academic parent-teacher teams, and that just hasn't launched itself. I mean, that's a statewide project, and that involves a district investing some money and time. Without that, I mean, it's a big endeavor when you start talking about academic parent-teacher teams and that whole two-way line of communication. Without that, I mean, it's a big endeavor when you start talking about academic parent teacher teams and that whole two-way line of communication. We have talked about it a number of times, um, with the launch grant with Don Nixon earlier this year, when she came in and talked about writing this grant, academic parent teacher teams was part of that process.
And I'm sorry, but it just seems like it should be an integral part of any process of working with a student who needs additional support, to be having those conversations with parents, and that should be something that our staff does pretty routinely with any student that we're providing additional supports to, that, that doesn't need a separate program and separate dollars.
And it's not really a separate program, it's more or less time, um, so other schools that have implemented, say, academic parent teacher teams, four times a year, um, or more, they've allotted a day where parents come in, it was parent, essentially parent teacher conferences, where the parents will get that data together and set goals with their child, with the student, so they see the class as a whole, they see the individual student, and they do these set, so it's a calendar thing too, so it's a huge domino effect, um. That's like the learning that is, is that it's not just as simple as that, it's a calendar thing, I mean, so then, that extends our time, that changes, it changes things a little bit. So we're, I mean, it's not something that we're tabling, we still have conversations and try to wrap our head around, how can we do with the structures that we have in place currently? It, it's a working problem.
I think that's the key, is how do we do it with the programs we currently have, we have RTI, we have PPS, we're investing money in those programs, and.
It needs to involve families.
It needs to be what we need it to be, not what someone else thinks it should be, and, I don't know. You know, and I think the systems are all great, because there's so many good programs, I just worry about the engagement piece with families. Or with outside agencies, and how we bring them into people service teams.
Would this be appropriate to be considered as part of what Kevin is going to be working on?
I think it can definitely be brought up, especially in the communication pillar, and I think family engagement is going to come up in our conversations for strategic planning, that, uh, we either take the money that we're investing in programs right now and reinvest it, um, in what is a better fit, or we evaluate that, uh, because, yeah, we can't just keep throwing money at the problem.
Right, right.
I thought it was cool, I, I mean, I don't really ever remember seeing this before.
Every year we do it, um, we update it every year, we complete something called a SERV, which is our school-wide implementation review, and then we do something called a staff perception survey.
I haven't ever seen this, I don't know.
We take that data and that information, and that drives our action plan, uh, we take staff's perception of where they feel programming is at, which is heavily skewed because their perception is completely off, which gives us data and information of, for professional development and discussion to say, okay, we are doing these things, you're, you're just not thinking of it in appropriate terms, so then we have to go back and re-educate the vocabulary, however we're delivering things or discussing things, um, and then the school-wide implementation review is every piece of your multi-level system's support, what it looks like at the intensive level, at its tier-two level, and at your universal level.
So you have all that data from last year?
For the last summer, we received it from fourteen.
That'll be good information for strategic planning as well.
It's all online, it's, it's sort of a data warehouse on RTI Centers.
Just a quick notation for the board on that, on that note, uh, the RTI, uh, committee, we have assembled every year, and we also have a PBIS committee. Uh, both of those are district-driven, and they are both required to have a action plan, and so typically, in the summertime, we bring those action plans forward to you. As the staff leaves in May and June, they meet to convene and look at the action plan to add for the fall and winter for the preceding year. That's how we got the PBIS coordinator position, and the RTI coordinator positions, and coaching positions, through the, through the committee work. So what we'll bring forward to you, I think Shelley's next with the PBIS, um, action plan that they have, that'll be coming forward to you yearly on a annual basis, so just want to get that notation in there.
Did you get your questions answered? I have other, because I have another one.
No, I was just wondering, um, if we can have summer school numbers, or report on summer school?
It's not over yet, it's not over yet.
Okay, well, it just says June summer school was successful.
I want to say, I can tell you, a guesstimate in June, we had about forty kids here a day for two weeks, we had two programs, two and a half programs, really, the camera flicking and reading kind of combined up. We have another one-week session tonight, and two weeks in August, and the August ones are full, waiting list on them as well. Um, we have Wolf Camp that we staff with two teachers to help supervise, we count those numbers, and there was close to forty kids there for two days, eight hours days. So the numbers will be, wait, but how you live, I don't know, we have this.
Cool.
I can see previous years, I haven't been involved for two years. We have a need for more, but I just can't find staff who want to commit to two weeks here or one week for, not travels in June.
I think that's where the collaboration comes in, like, with the Boys and Girls Club staff, they only have part-time staff.
Yep, and we both get two. The RIC Center was funding, or working with us for the training lessons during June, and there are ones that are offering the entrance routine on Easter July, so a couple of community partnerships already. Which otherwise we will be, have one class available on each June and August.
I just wanted to thank Meg Brown.
For her painting of the gym, sounds cool.
Painting the gym, oh, she just takes personal pride in that building.
Who wants to paint?
I have a question, um, Missy, about the seclusion and restraint report.
Mm-hmm.
And I know that, um, all of those incidents are happening in elementary school, and zero in the others, Q, how does this compare to prior years?
I have comparisons chart for you, it just wasn't happening, so.
Okay, but just a summary, do you?
It's increased a little bit from last year, um, and then the prior year was fifty-two, so we went from fifty-two to this year, what, nineteen? I think last year we were down to ten, so.
But typically in the elementary and not in the others?
No, no, it depends on the students and where they're at, so there was a year where we had a middle school student that required a number of restraints and seclusions, um.
No? Okay.
And that particular kiddo then went through a full evaluation process, medicine change, medication change, all of that, and then we saw a huge decline on those numbers that the next year, this particular situation, as you can see, is only, is only three kiddos, and two, one of the, one of the kids, and they're going to Ashland Day Training, um, and then the other kiddo, we have made a recommendation with the family just to, it didn't work. Uh, so then without, instead of, um, keeping the student in that classroom whole time, we ended up having that student in, um, the resource room most of the day. Limiting transitions, limiting those problem triggers, which was transitions, which were a number of pinpointing, we figured out where that behavior was occurring and minimized that, and it was that huge decline, um, where.
So are we talking about, there's the three, there's three students, um, who have experienced seclusions, and five students, or five or six that have experienced restraints, are those numbers, is that eight altogether, or is that five altogether?
Um, no, it could be three of the same kids, um, that experienced, um, with two additional.
We don't know. Okay.
Five different kids total, um, oftentimes, it might be a restraint to get them to the resource room, and then to de-escalate the situation, because our behavior is so increased, that we have fishbowl mirrors in the room, so that, say, this situation is to seclude, meaning you just let them calm themselves down, um, in that room, um, without injuring themselves.
Okay. Okay, thank you. I have one question for Dave Weber, and that I don't see cutting the tree on your list, do we?
I'll put it on though.
Oh, put it on.
The only reason I had CISA come over and he did a walk-around diagram, and recommend, you know, cutting it down because of the, he said tripping hazard, he said it could be a potential tripping hazard on this. I'll work with Ben, I, uh, we have lumber that was left over from the outdoor classroom that we had to tear down behind the tech ed building, on the right side by the ravine, uh, and I donate, and we can donate it to Ben's project, and it's sitting up there in front of me, and he, he, I'd love to use it.
Yeah, I've seen people do like a bench, you know, around the tree, I.
Yeah.
Yeah, I would be.
I'm, I'm all for it, really.
Yeah, I'd certainly vote for, for keeping the tree, but, yeah, if that comes forward, I'm.
I, I could put, I could put, uh, woodchips around it, but they won't stay there because they trample on it there.
No.
And won't ever grow grass there.
No, but it looks like the kids enjoy it, so I just want to make sure it wasn't on your, on your list.
I can see it good.
Okay.
We can bend it any way you want, so.
Yeah, thank you for bringing that forward, mhm.
And would it be too much to ask that before that particular tree, I know this sounds like micromanagement, but before that particular tree gets cut down, that the board is aware, is made aware of the plan?
Or an alternative?
I think we made aware of the plan, if that's the case, yeah.
Well, I'd like, I mean, yeah.
Well, Dave. Yeah.
No, I mean, I'm just saying that before any action is taken to cut the tree down, you'll come back to the board and say, we've looked at all the options, and there's no other way, okay, so we'll have another, we'll have another crack at this, if, if you come up. Okay.
And come up with an alternative, thank you, Dave.
Thanks.
Just one other thing, I want to congratulate and thank Randy for the grant, congratulations.
Yeah.
Exciting, thank you. Um, we have a motion by Devon, a second by Glenn, to approve and place on file our reports, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion approved, uh, nine point one, approval of our vouchers.
And we have a lot of vouchers that we looked at at the finance meeting, um, so I will make a motion that we authorize one million, three hundred sixty-nine thousand, eight hundred forty-two dollars and ninety-four cents.
We have a motion by Glenn and a second by Larry, could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Glenn Carlson?
Yes.
Debbie Knopf?
Yes.
Yes.
Point?
Yes. Washing carries, uh, ten point one, unfinished business, our first item is Kevin Strandberg's strategic plan, and Jeff has an update.
Okay, so, we've been on the phone with Kevin, um, he was out on leave until mid-July, so he wasn't able to come in, uh, to meet with us until after July fifteenth, he's on leave.
Or June fifteenth?
July fifteenth.
July fifteenth isn't here yet.
Yeah, so he's unable to be, he's unable to be with us until July fifteenth.
Oh, he's unable to come, okay. Sorry.
But he was able, he did call us, and he gave us, um, an idea of what we're going to be doing here this next two or three months, and I want to read them, there's three items, I want to read to you.
Okay.
The first one is, uh, establish a schedule with administrative team here at the school, uh, dates will be determined before, determined before July fifteenth, so he wants to come and meet with the admin team and myself to go over planning. Uh, the second item, establish the schedule and agenda for training for staff on specifics, accountability, and outcomes by the admin team, uh, as part of beginning of the school year in-service, so during the in-service, we're going to be, uh, the admin team will meet with all staff, and they're going to be looking at, uh, those areas of specifics, accountability, and outcomes, and what we're looking to accomplish as a, a staff, um, over the course of the year. Then the third item is set an agenda for the school board, uh, set a time for you in August, early August, you can determine what best that you, you'd like to meet with you for four hours. That could be in the evening or during the week, weekdays, or on the weekend, on a Saturday morning from, from nine to one, it's really up to you what you would like to do. He can come here during the day, in the evening, it's really your time.
Anytime's good for me.
And that would be, um, no later than mid-August, so probably prior to.
I don't know that we should meet before the administration team meets, so that needs to probably take place before the board can meet.
Yep. Okay, so our, our goal will be, we'll meet with him in July.
So that you guys can. In four months.
And then, um, he can come to you at the board meeting in August, and then after that, maybe you can set your sale.
Maybe September.
Well, he'd like to meet with you before mid-August.
Oh, okay. That might be tight.
Or we can give you a written, we can give you a written narrative of what we want, we don't need to wait till the board meeting, possibly. But that's what he'd like to do, and this is his additional contract, the board approved for him?
Right.
Do you want Linda to send out emails, just to look at some dates in August before the fifteenth?
Yeah, what day is our, our meeting is the twelfth, right?
Board meeting is the twelfth.
Hmm?
Twelve.
Board meeting's the twelfth.
And he wants to meet?
Probably prior, prior to the meeting.
Prior to then?
He said mid-August, so I think he's, he would be okay that week, if you had to wait, wait till. I don't think it's, it's.
I think he just wants to meet before the school year starts, so that the admin team and the board are all on the same page with how we're moving into the next school year.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yep.
Um, that would kind of be part of it, and then the next part would be the strategic planning moving forward, um. But we need to still get that on the case.
So will the, the admin meeting will take place in the next two to three weeks, is that the plan?
Yep.
We contracted with him for three admin meetings, did we?
Yes.
So.
Three admin leadership sessions, he's going to come in and meet with the admin team.
Is that available for the fifteenth, because we have a meeting set for Wednesday.
With just you guys, or with Kevin?
Yeah, let me, well, he, I, I can't say why he's on leave, so I don't want to do that here, um, tonight, but I'll get back to him, we'll confirm those dates, but we'll, we'll meet with him in the month of July.
Okay, all three times?
Yeah, we'll try to get that accomplished before the board meets with them, so.
And I'm just going to throw out, like, Monday, the nineteenth, the following, the Monday after the school board meeting or something, you know what I mean, just another.
Like an afternoon session, or an evening session?
Or like, I don't know, five to nine, four to eight, or, you know, four-thirty.
Let me do that nine.
What's the date on that?
Four-thirty, eight-thirty, the nineteenth, it just seems like Monday night is basically a pretty open night in my life, but.
Nineteen?
All right, well, shoot, how's that song, everybody, Monday to nineteenth, is that?
No, that's too far out for me to look.
August.
Guess that's a month away, one day, month and a half.
It's the night, it's the week after the school.
Well, I think, yeah, and to be before their in-service schedule is, you know, it's hard to count.
I understand that.
The earlier we could have it during the day, I think the better, you know, I.
So, nine to one?
Well, I'm not even, I'm not saying in the morning, I'm saying if we're going to do it, I, I don't want to still be here, because I don't think my brain will be working too well at nine o'clock at night, after four hours of.
How about, three to.
Oh, come on.
Three to six, three to seven, that'd be great, but.
Well, we've done Saturday and Sunday morning sessions with Kevin also.
I'm not available Saturdays at all, I don't know.
So.
Monday to nineteenth, from three to seven, just to start, start it, Linda, we'll, we'll get an email up to everyone?
I'll probably be at four-thirty, but that's what it is.
Well, we could do four-thirty.
Four-thirty to?
I mean, I don't want to make you guys.
No, no, I'm, I'm, I can, I can go till, I can go till eight-thirty.
Is there a vote that ain't, at, at, at?
Uh, probably be nine o'clock, a nine o'clock vote, so, yeah.
Oh, yeah. Yeah.
Okay, four-thirty, four-thirties, okay, four-thirty to eight-thirty to the nineteenth, nineteenth. Maybe?
Maybe. Well, that's.
Well, I'm not, I'm not committing.
Uh, we can move on, ten point one point two, approve Neola series one thousand, two thousand, three thousand.
Move to table?
Second.
Is that what you wanted?
We have a motion by Debbie to table, second by Glenn, discussion, what we discussed earlier as the process moving forward. It was really good to have Chris at the meeting to help clarify process and procedure, uh, moving forward, because it was a long time ago that we discussed all that with him, so. All those in favor?
Aye.
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 Motion carries, ten point two point one, consider dual. Motion carries, ten point two point one, consider dual credit ECCP policy, do you wanna present, Shelley?
Sure. Uh, on the front sheet, do you use the microphone?
Or can you come up or use the mic, yeah.
So, the first sheet on there, um, was things discussed by a committee, um, of four of us, on the dual credit and the difference between dual credit and the early college credit program. And on the bottom, that was changed from the original committee based on DPI findings, um, and they said that we should be giving them letter grades A, B, C, D, or an F, but not including it in their high school GPA, so if an eighth grader takes an algebra class and gets a B, then they become high school kids and they're straight A's from freshman year to senior year, that B is not included in that GPA. So, a lot of times it would deter kids from taking an upper level class, thinking I might not be ready, I don't wanna get a B or a C because I wanna be the valedictorian when I get to high school. So, in order to have them keep pushing themselves and challenging them, DPI recommends, we still give them letter grades, we just don't count that in the high school GPA. And we indicate on their transcript that class was earned as an eighth grade student. Um, on the back was a little bit more research that I did, um, because I know there's a lot of confusion, some schools, I know Washburn and Ashland High School offer dual credit classes, but they're not dual credit in the same sense as our dual credit here on campus. Um, Washburn calls there's dual credit, but it's the Northland College classes, the WITC or the LCO classes that kids actually go to. And so I asked Ms. King, the principal there, to explain how they get their three to one, and, um, same with the Ashland High School principal, Brian Chitene, talked to him, and a lot, a lot of it is based on the, um, Carnegie unit, which high schools use and colleges use based on lecture time, instruction time, and time of rigor for the homework, the assignments that go with the students out of the classroom. And based on forty-five minutes a day for ninety days, would be the almost seventy-five hours to get that half credit for the semester. When students are attending Northland College, oftentimes their lectures are one and a half hours, three times a week, along with a two to three hour per lecture homework expectation. Hence the three to one, oftentimes it's a hundred and fifty college hours of work time, which we give our students here a one full credit for our one semester class when they're out of the building. Um, at the bottom, I just included some past practices, I had to look that up because I wasn't the principal, when these things were discussed and approved, but the dual credit courses previously were the print reading and the Math three fifty-five, and students did get three college credits and a half credit here for the one semester. The only one that was different was the construction course, and I was told that was because that was a certificate program, not a dual credit program. Um, and one of the things that have come out of having that dual credit offered as a full semester course, we've had few students who exceeded their needed credits for graduation, but they didn't wanna quite graduate early. And some of them were taking three study hall periods, or the IEs that we call them, and we have a policy that states they cannot take more than two. Kids who are in sports, it really affects, they have to have six classes to be considered full-time to participate in sports. And so, that, I think that's why we had that two cred, two IE policy, to make sure we kept all of our students full-time.
So are we, do we have a consensus at this point on what we're suggesting as far as the dual credit? You know, we.
So, what, what was, what was the question you're, you're referring to on top of dual credit, the one semester would be point five credit earned here at the Bayford School, if a teacher teaches a dual credit course here. On this is point five, and the reason it was tabled a couple of months back is because there was talk about possibly going to a one, to make it, to make it, um, across the board.
Right.
And so Shelley was coming here tonight to talk about that.
In this information here too, I sat down with Beth Pap, who is the one teacher right now doing the dual credits, and she understood it better with the Carnegie units, understanding the point five and the seventy-five hours.
So she's on board with this?
Yeah, it makes me wonder though about dual credit then. You know, but I think there should be, um, time and effort put into the, the advanced placement courses, then maybe that's a better fit. 'Cause it seems like dual credit is not weird.
It benefits the students.
It would encourage kids to seek outside youth options if they're gonna get more high school credits.
Plus we get reimbursed with the program, but also we don't get reimbursed for Beth Pap teaching in-house.
Hmm.
And we don't get, dual credits don't apply for the, um, reimbursement from DPI for the college credits. We do get them at a reduced rate, um.
Is there, yeah, is there a?
Because the, it, regardless of if they're different amounts of hours, they're still the same amount of college credit. And it's still the same expectation of rigor and standard.
Right.
And it has a different value, it seems, so it still is just weird.
But we talked about it going for a full semester credit, which I think would limit a lot of the kids then too, and they may not take it, um, if they had the lab attached to it, so they'd have the instruction forty-three minutes, and then the lab forty-three minutes for the added time, so they'd have the hundred and fifty hours for the full credit. That was discussed, but then that would limit them on if they could take other electives from the high school.
'Cause they don't have the option of AP courses, we don't have.
We don't, well, if, we, we can offer it if kids are to that level, I know we have in the past.
Yeah, so the thing about AP is you have to have an instructor, credible instructor here at the high school that has a master's degree.
Yeah, 'cause I thought we talked about that.
And on our core areas, we just don't have that for AP here in Bayford, that's why we don't have AP.
Same with the dual credit, you can teach dual credit, try to become an adjunct professor, but you have to have a master's degree in the class content area you're teaching. And we went through with the people, and we have two in high school that we came up with that, one was Beth Pap who's already doing it, and the other is MCI with a master's in art, or art classes, and those are the two.
Mm-hmm.
But we have a lot, a lot of national board, but that doesn't count towards the master's for teaching the college level.
Are we taking action on this tonight? Are we expected to take action, do you want us to take action on this tonight?
Well, um, it, this is at the board level, it's been tabled for about two or three months, and the issue was point five versus one. And she provided information tonight, the only thing I have a question on is Beth Pap, had we had some type of narrative from her that agreed with you, that would help. 'Cause she's actually was voicing her concern the other way.
Right, that was before I sat down with her, when I had more information of why some schools do it this way, some schools do it other way.
No, I'm. No, I'm.
So would it make sense for us to move the youth options to point five?
Because a lot of those are meeting the hundred and fifty hours of instruction time. Depending on what class it is, I know when I was looking at some of the offerings at Northland College, classes will meet from nine to ten fifteen, and so it's more than the forty-three minutes that we meet.
Is there a required number of hours for college?
They go on the same as the Carnegie units.
Hundred and twenty hours.
So that three credit college dual credit course is meant to meet that, or we're saying it's a different number of hours?
The dual credit in-house one is meeting for the semester seventy-five hours.
So it's not.
And their agency is indicating that's enough to earn three college credits.
Right.
Hmm, right, so Ms. Pap's.
I think maybe that's the question.
Right.
I think that's questionable.
So Ms. Pap, her.
I mean, I get it, I get the whole thing, but.
So Ms. Pap's presentation, she indicated that it was rigor, there was, it met the standards of, at that level, so then a question. Tonight is, um, even though LCO is saying that the class meets the rigor and the standards, but Ms. Swanson is saying that the minutes aren't there, so therefore they're going to keep it at point five.
If we keep it at point five, do we need a motion, or is that?
The motion for the document, dual credit, 'cause this is on our board policy, you go under board policies, this is on there.
Is this the current policy or what's the change?
Yeah.
The change was adding dual credit, ECCP is already on there. And we didn't, we didn't include the DPI recommendation in our policy, and one year we did give kids credit, A, B, C, and then the next year we went with pass, fail, because we, at the time, there was questions on if it counts towards the high school GPA, and there was some kids and parents who were concerned if their kids were ready for high school credit, and how it would affect their GPA, so we went with pass, fail the last year.
So what we're adding is the dual credit.
Right.
And that primarily is impacting classes that Beth Pap is currently.
Right.
Teaching in-house.
Yep.
That are the same as, that they're meeting the LCO requirement.
Correct.
LCO requirement. Okay.
Well, I'll make a motion that we adopt the dual credit policy, um, as presented in exhibit ten point two point one. Is that?
I'll second that. Thank you for all your pre, all your research on this, Shelley.
We have a motion by Glenn and a second by Dev.
Yes.
All those in favor?
Aye.
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 I'm not in favor, I'm voting no. But our motion does carry with our three approvals. Linda? Uh, ten point two point two, consider twenty twenty, twenty twenty-one school day extension.
So that will be, um, tabled tonight, uh, Mr. Woodman brought that up, uh, at a previous board meeting. And essentially what he was asking us to look at, and now that the ministry, the administrative team is back, I mentioned at the special board meeting, what we're gonna do this month is look at, you know, um, this year we have so many snow days.
Right.
So we added minutes, and what, what Craig was saying, Mr. Woodman was saying, that if we could get kids out here earlier in the summer, um, maybe three, four days earlier, that we could, would adding minutes to the day justify that, could we justify adding minutes to the day for that purpose? We have not sat down and talked about it, that's what we're going to do now, we're, we're all, we're all back in the building, and we're gonna take time to research that and bring it back to you.
Okay. Do you want us to table, I mean, move to table or just?
Not at all.
No, okay.
I don't think it needs any action.
I, just in discussion, I just wanna say that the other educational research that I look at, um, really talks, more and more schools are going to having less time off in a large block for students because of retention. And we know that kids who are at risk have even a harder time with retention when we have a longer block of time, so I wouldn't want our goal to ever be, let's make summer as long as we can and make those days a little longer, I would never wanna to see us move in that direction. Um, I see its purpose as helpful for making up for snow days, if that's, you know, something, but, um, I don't want us to extend summer any longer than it already is, you know, so many schools are going to shorter summers and have time, time off throughout the year.
Longer time breaks.
So that kids don't get that really long break, um, for a lot of good reasons, so, anyway, just in discussion.
Uh, ten point two point three, consider Neola policies, four thousand, five thousand, six thousand. I'll motion to table.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Glenn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Approved, motion proved, consider two thousand nineteen, twenty twenty academic standards.
So this is the annual, uh, required by DPI, there's not some form of instruction to adopt the standard, however, we have an additional standard on here, on the lower bottom, personal finance literacy. Is in addition to, um, new mandate standard that has come out, we are responsible to teach financial literacy, which we all know is extremely important. Credit cards, mortgages, taxation, everything.
Great.
Motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by Debbie, second by Glenn, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion approved. Consider La Pointe fuel bid for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
I move that we accept the bid of, uh, from La Pointe Gas at a dollar fifty-three a gallon.
It was a dollar seventy-nine this year, so.
That's better.
What?
Yeah, it was a dollar seventy-nine, it was eighteen eighteen, it was.
So, so.
Dropped.
Yeah.
Wow.
I'll second it, motion by Glenn, second by myself, can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Yes.
Yes.
Carlson?
Yes.
Knopf?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten point two point six, consider milk bid for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
This one always confuses me, 'cause there's always that escalation box, where they can always fix it, so.
Yeah.
Last year we had a skim load was at, um, point two one seven, from the chocolate skim, two one seven, one percent was at two two five, skim is at two one one.
Very close.
Where it started at.
What's with all the paper?
A motion to approve.
Second.
Motion by myself, second by Glenn, could we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Just for milk.
Yeah, that's about that.
Yes.
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 Yes. Our motion carries, ten point two point seven, consider Magloon Island ferry line bid for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Dev, a second by Glenn, and need discussion.
Um, it didn't go up too much, about the, um, middle school, high school students were fifty cent increased per round trip. Uh, um, elementary was forty cents per trip.
I think it was the back side of a.
Was the chaperone cost the same?
It was a dollar increase, but most of our chaperones use the May card, so that's discounted anyway, so we never have to just pay. So really, it's reasonable, I guess.
Uh, can we have a roll call, please, Linda?
Debbie Knopf?
Yes.
Eric Gary?
Yes.
Michael Boy?
Yes.
Yes.
Motion carries, ten point two point eight, consider La Pointe lunch bid for twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, the exhibit was cut off in our, in my copy, I couldn't see the dollar, it was like.
It was eighteen dollars.
Okay.
In where?
In my bid, yeah, in my copy that I had from the email, but I think.
What did they finally come?
They came back with giving up, you know, that six per meal and then.
Hourly.
Because of the higher ferry charges.
Okay.
Uh, so that was a big explanation, and then to me, at eighteen dollars per hour, so it's twenty dollars per hour. So that would give us a twenty percent increase over last year, if we wouldn't be in the bid. Obviously not going with the, um.
Alternative. No, no.
So they're.
I was gonna start eating over there.
Yeah, they're twenty percent increases based on the ferries.
Yeah.
Ferry, and then also wages, they wanted to increase the three dollars for the wages, it was fifteen.
So for the year, it's twenty-seven thousand, I think.
Approximately, yeah.
Motion to approve.
One second.
It's thirty-four.
Thirty-four.
Thirty-four, thirty-four.
But it came down, it came down.
Oh, no, it was.
It came down to approximately.
Thirty?
Oh, it's thirty-four.
No, but it came down, that was about twenty.
Probably around thirty-four. Yeah.
They wanted forty-nine five originally.
I don't.
So I think the, the cost of the last was another, it was five thousand dollars.
Right.
And then the, uh, approval this evening is also for the three-year.
What?
Is everybody understanding that?
Oh, does it say that in here?
Within the contract and bid, it indicates that they're requesting to commit to business for three years.
Yeah, it does.
Right, they just wanna get even more safe than the business of.
Sure.
Yeah.
And so there's no escalator, no. Sure, and so there's no escalator, no cost of living, they're sticking with the.
Uh, they want to negotiate that.
It'll be similar to what we do with.
Bikini.
Bikini, very similar, and this is actually a good thing, the continuity, the consistency, I think it's good for the island school and for district over here, have a three-year rollover like that.
Sounds good.
Okay. We have a motion by Larry Sext by myself, can we have a roll call, Linda?
Yes.
Michael Boyd?
Yes.
Lynn Carlson?
Yes.
Larry Gary?
Yes.
And that's for the hourly option.
Right.
You know that, okay. Uh, ten point two point nine, consider sale of two thousand eight Chevy Express van.
Dave?
I'll move that we put the two thousand eight Chevy Express van out for bid for sale.
Second.
We have a motion by Glenn and a second by Deb. Can we have a roll call please, Linda? Is there any other discussion?
How much does it worth? Do we know?
We'll find out. You're right.
You know, it's only a two-wheel drive, and it's pretty useless for us, I can tell you that.
I just wanted to add one part of discussion for me. We had a request from a staff member today who does a lot of outside projects with kids to, for us to keep the van.
Oh.
But my response to him via email was, safety's number one priority, and this is an older van, and Dave's pumped in a lot of parts and money into it. And I think overall, I indicated to the staff member, we have new vehicles he can use, we have new quarter buses, we have a new transportation vehicle. And by keeping this, it's really not sensible in terms of safety.
Makes sense.
Can we have a roll call?
Michael, Boyd?
Yes.
Lynn Carlson?
Yes.
Debbie Knopf?
Yes.
Larry Gary?
Yes.
Our motion carries, ten point two point ten, consider resignation.
Motion to approve.
I'll second it.
With. With regret, but hopefully it'll be a good move for her.
Yeah, and in discussion, just thank Ms., thank you Ms. Amanda for her time here at our school, she's been great.
Yeah.
Uh, so we have a motion by Debbie, a second by myself, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, ten point two point eleven, consider front entrance landscape proposal.
Motion to approve.
Second.
I didn't even get to look at it yet, what is it?
Oh, it's just putting out some new shrubs and.
Oh, all the topsoil, all the sod, basically.
The one part is where on the playground, none of, no grass grows, it's just mud, and it gets draped in. Um, Brad Dryer from EarthSense thinks that the sod would give much better, you know, gives a much better chance of keeping the grass there. Um, so he would call in all the tops, you know, calling topsoil, it's not.
Right.
And then that would give us a chance to.
But this doesn't say anything about sod.
Yeah, this.
Yes, it does.
Where?
It's called sod.
Oh, and play area.
Blacktop, painted green.
Yeah, eight thousand painted green.
Aye.
And then the other areas is just when you're walking in the school district, the whole front of the, you know, on the, um.
That hill.
Right side, no, not on the hill, we're not doing anything with that.
Okay.
Yeah, it would just be everything from front entrance all the way over to.
Cross the elementary?
Playground area, just putting in low maintenance plants and wood chips. Right now it's dirt.
So where is the sod exactly, where is that? Is that this whole playground that we have a picture?
The whole top area where they plake or.
We tried several times, we see it, it's, since I've been here, it's two thousand and two.
Yeah, I think it's this and up.
The soil, you know, what was ever felt there, you know, when they finished, it's still, yeah, just don't take grass.
Is there another option besides grass?
Astro turf. I don't know if that would be, it would be more expensive, obviously, like fake grass.
So seeding doesn't, hasn't worked, Dave, because of, you need new soil and that.
Kids are constantly there, on it too.
Yeah, it's hard to.
I just know sod can, I mean, hopefully you'll get a good. Got a good watering system?
No, but I mean seriously.
Yeah, yeah.
You know, gets a lot of sprinklers, and you're going to have to really water it.
May I, Boyd, to add that any sort of astro turf out there, you also really look into the heat signature that stuff provides, it's a rubber mat. Already got heat buildup on the south face of the building, it's going to get hotter.
Hmm.
True.
Thank you.
So if I may, just a couple of comments. Now, Randy, this is going to go all the way across kindergarten front?
Right.
Okay.
Hundred and seven feet by seventy-five feet.
Let's just really clean up that front area, this looks really.
Yeah, you can't grow, you can't grow any grass in front of you, because it'll shade.
I just wanted to add Missy to this conversation, it's her elementary kids out there playing in that front area, do you see this as a potential good thing? Or do you think there's some comments you want to make about it?
I think it's a good thing, a lot of the kids in front of like Linda's office there dig holes, like they're trying to get to China, and they're digging, and I, it's a mess. And then they come in, and then they're dusty and they're dirty, and a lot of the kids, they want to play, they play football, and they play fishy fishy on the top part. And a lot of accidents happen because they're tripping, they're falling, and then they're scraping their arms, and it's just really hard ground.
Yeah, it's a real window, it's a window, it's right next to the.
It's also bringing in with it, is a, is a, it's stored in the light there, because it, it wears the wax, and whatever ran out the door.
Right.
And you know, whatever sand may bring in, that, of course, the city brings up in the winter time, and the salt, the salt and sand drop. But if we can keep some sand out, it would be nice.
Do you want to get like a maintenance plan from them? For care after it's done? For caring for the sun?
Just water it, Dave, water, water, water.
Water it.
Yep. You need hoses and sprinklers.
Do we get, well, are they the only ones that do that?
There's not very many people on that do that.
They're nearby. I mean, there is a landscaping company on the island, but.
Should be cheaper to buy it on the mainland.
But I don't, did I have to bring all my equipment over here?
I think you might have to change yourself.
Go with EarthSense, I am, yeah, no. Did we, I made a motion to approve, did we do a motion yet?
Did you?
I didn't.
Motion by Michael, roll call, Debbie Knopf?
No, I didn't motion that.
Who, who had the motion?
Uh-uh.
Not for this.
Not for, that was for the resignation.
Yeah.
Um, Debbie, the first motion, Glenn the second.
That sounds right.
On landscaping, yep.
Okay, motion by Debbie, second by Glenn, yeah, we'll have a roll call please.
Debbie Knopf?
Yes.
Glenn from.
Yes.
Boyd?
Yes.
Yes.
That's a lot of money for grass.
It's making it for your tree.
They have to scrape away a lot of that icky stuff.
They have a machine that does that, they literally walk up to the ground and you machine away six inches of dirt.
I move we go into executive session.
During two executive session, in accordance with Wisconsin statute nineteen point eight five one C, considering employment promotion, compensation, or performance evaluation data of any public employee over which the governmental body has jurisdiction or exercises responsibility, one, hiring or special education aid, two, base wage, non-affiliated, and cut two thousand nineteen twenty contracts. Considering financial, medical, social, or personal histories or disciplinary data of specific persons, preliminary consideration of a specific personnel problems, or the investigation of charges against specific persons, except where paragraph B applies, which if discussed in public, would be likely to have a substantial adverse effect upon the reputation of any person referred to in such histories or data, or involved in such problems or investigation. Yeah, remember incidents. We have a motion by Glenn, second by.
No one yet.
Second then.
Second it's.
Larry.
Larry, roll call please.
You want to shut us off?
Yes.
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 Larry Gary?
He said yes.
Lynn Carlson?
Yes.